I will look for a motion to excuse Jeff Phillips tonight.
Make a motion to excuse Jeff.
All right, and with that motion in support, we'll have Sue Caller roll. Oh, pledge allegiance first.
Yep, thanks Perry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Perry. Sue.
Councilmember Canfield?
Here.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Phillips is absent, councilmember Salzweil?
Here.
And Mayor DeGore?
I am here. I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and we'll have the closed minutes from our joint meeting with like our own as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll... I'll support discussion or changes.
Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent, and councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, citizen count, my freedom's not on the agenda.
What? Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Laura Boothrods, and I'm here to announce to you an exciting new program that I am volunteering for, for businesses and nonprofits in and around Lowell area. It's called Business Brew, and I've sent an email actually to everybody about this program already, but I wanted to make sure to come here to announce it to you in person, and I've got some flyers for you, because good marketing is, I have to ask you to hand out some of these flyers, and I also want to make sure that those who are listening in on YouTube channel also know about this. Business Brew is a once-a-month kind of a pop-up clinic for marketing and communication needs for area businesses and nonprofit organizations. I have joined with two other marketing and communication professionals to volunteer time once a month on the fourth Wednesday of every month. It starts at 8:00 a.m., it's going to be just across the street at Big Boiler Brewing, and we are going to be dispensing free advice to businesses and nonprofits who need any sort of a help, any sort of help ranging from maybe reviewing brochures that they've got, planning for special events, looking at updating their websites. The three of us that are volunteering for this program have a diversity of communications and marketing experience, and we're banding together to help make Lowell an even better place. So I hope you'll join me in announcing this program to business owners and nonprofit people that you know of. This program is totally free, we're just deciding once a month to volunteer time to help make this community an even better place. Can I go ahead and just pass these out, or?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to give you a couple, so you can give a couple to friends, too. Is that one?
Sure.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, did you have any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, Perry Beecham reside at 924 Riverside Drive. I want to thank the council and Mike Burns for getting sidewalk in from, my understanding they're going to put sidewalk in from the parking lot on South Broadway to Ottawa. I think that's great. I'm just going to say that I'd like to see sidewalk go the whole distance along Broadway down to Boas Road, and again, you're creating a truck route for that, and I just think sidewalk should be there. It's city-owned, and I understand that it's not in the budget, and constraints of not putting sidewalk in. The issue that I have is, and I understand that, and I agree with that, I would just hope that when the next resident or the next business comes into town and has a plan, that they say it's not in my budget to put sidewalk in, or to pave my parking lot, or whatever, that, again, then you go, okay, we didn't do it there, so therefore, how do we hold our businesses and residents to the same standard? So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Kurt Benson, and I just wanted to briefly introduce myself. I am running for Kent County Circuit Court, and I will be very brief, because I know it's early to talk about campaigns and the like, I wanted to inform you that there are two seats open because Judges Johnston and Lieber are both retiring, not by choice, by the way, in the Michigan's Constitution, you cannot run again for judge after your 70th birthday, so they are being age limited out, and there are five of us seeking these two seats, and I think maybe about a month or so ago, one of the other candidates was here, I wanted to be, let everyone know that there are two seats. So we'll have a primary August 7th, and unfortunately, a lot of money and expense just to weed out one person, because the top four vote better, excuse me, vote-getters will move on, and then in the November election, the top two vote-getters will get the seats. It is a countywide seat, of course, so it covers everything in Kent County. I've been practicing law in Grand Rapids for some 31 years, and of those 31 years, 14 of those years I was a law professor at WNU Cooley. So, I'm by far the most experienced of anyone else running, in other words, I'm the oldest candidate. And I have a kind of a, I guess my presentation would be, and by the way, a quick aside, I spent six years on the Grand Rapids Board of Education, two years as president, two years as vice president. I'm extremely familiar with local government, I'm a big fan of local government, and I do appreciate what it is you do, and I know how difficult it can be. I know sometimes these public comments can get very uncomfortable, because I sent you many, many public comments that were not particularly comfortable, so I hope, I hope you seek comfort in what I'm saying here today, because I just wanted to let you know who I was. So I spent 31 years as a lawyer, I spent 14 years as a law professor, I have the practical experience that lawyers develop over time, but I also have that scholarly that law professors have, and I find in my experience that sometimes lawyers, judges are good problem solvers, they're good people, people, people persons, but they're not necessarily great scholars of the law. Flip side, I know a lot of judges who are very good at scholarship, but not necessarily people persons, and then they don't necessarily run a great courtroom, I think, I'd like to think, that I can bring both the practical day-to-day aspect coupled with the scholarship. I've done mostly insurance law, I've done mostly commercial law, I've done some criminal defense work. When I taught, I taught the rules of evidence, which of course is what judges have to do during trial, during the course of what I call the trial, and today, I'm, for the last two years, I've been representing municipalities, mostly police departments, such as Grand Rapids Police Department, Kent County Sheriff's Department, Mesquita, et cetera, and jail suicide cases, allegations of excessive force against our local police departments, and occasionally employment matters, FOIA, Open Meetings Act, I represent the City of Luddington, who seem to get sued daily by one man. If you have any questions about the Open Meetings Act or FOIA, please call me, because I'm becoming a real expert on those two topics, all because of one guy. So, anyway, that's all, I just wanted to introduce myself, I do have a, proud to say that I've got a great furnace in Lawd's Lake installed by Kentville Heating and Plumbing has been great. So, I don't know if I've got his vote, but he's got my vote, I move into Lowell. I, I, I'm a resident, by the way, of Grand Rapids, and I have a place now in Lawd's Lake, so. In any event, thank you very much for your attention, I appreciate it, and I certainly appreciate what you do as, as government officials. Of course, I'll answer any questions you have, otherwise I'll just take my seat. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, all right, Old Business is cleared. 5A Cascade Building Inspection Agreement, Michael.
At the April 16, 2018 Committee of the Hall Meeting, I was directed by the City Council to prepare an agreement with Cascade Township to continue our relationship regarding building inspection services, presenting this agreement for approval. The terms of the agreement remain Cascade will continue to provide inspection services for building, plumbing, mechanical, and electrical inspections for the City of Lowell. Cascade will continue to remit 20% of all fees collected by Cascade for inspections performed in the city. The city will be responsible for all co-enforcement issues as we are currently. Our agreement will be scheduled to begin on July 1st, 2018, when the current agreement expires, and will continue as an evergreen agreement, similar to my agreement as city manager. If the city no longer wishes to receive services from Cascade Township, the City Council can terminate the agreement within 45 days. Our agreement with Cascade Township is along the same terms they have with each jurisdictionally service. Brian Wilson's here tonight to answer any questions you may have, and I'm recommending Lowell City Council enter into an agreement with Cascade Township for building inspection services as presented.
I had previously reclusive myself from these discussions, because Brian's firm does a lot of inspections for us in our business relationship, but I don't feel that we've really done our homework on this yet, that we interviewed other candidates, we had, I had mentioned a couple that I felt we should contact, I know we did advertise in the Lowell Ledger in the Michigan Municipal League, and did not receive any interest, but I don't think those are places that people are aware of it. I have some problems, an issue comes down to drywall, and Brian, you can stop up and address this if you'd like, but I feel you guys are, and you and I discussing things, we couldn't put up two sheets of drywall without a building permit, at that point it crosses the line. Every other inspection firm sees drywall as a wall covering, and as we've discussed before in other meetings, I'm not a fan of big government and involvement in our life, and I just don't understand why to hang two $6 sheets of drywall, I need a $100 building So I would encourage us to contact some other firms and hear presentations, we did contact Cascade directly to let them know there were some concerns, and Brian was allowed to come in and address that, but we haven't interviewed any other candidates for this.
Yeah, I thought for sure the minute that, the way you put it out, somebody would have, but if they're not, if they're not going on to the MLI or reading the ledger, then these other building inspections aren't going to know.
Joe, do you want to address your comment?
Sure. Yeah.
I, I understand where you're coming from, Greg, and we talked about this before, really, it comes down to drawing the line somewhere, and even though the representation you make, I kind of agree that it's a very minor project, and we're not out to write permits for all those minor projects, and probably it's only, it's less than a handful of those a year, really, that are so small, maybe it's just the bulkheads from the kitchen, or a few sheets of drywall. So, those aren't the projects we're after. If we answer the question, oh, you can replace some drywall, what happens is people remove it from their entire home, do wiring, plumbing, mechanical work, and all kinds of other things that really are important to permit and make sure that it's done correctly before it's concealed. So I hear what you're saying, you know, we're not out for those projects, but in drawing the line there, it catches the important projects, and there's only a few that are kind of smaller than what we hope to come up with. That's the rationale of where we're coming from.
I wanted to, again, Perry Beecham, 924 Riverside Drive, I have a couple issues with, with Cascade, and again, because I checked with some others, and I guess the difference between maintenance and doing something, so example is, and I know Lowell's, we've gone back and forth over the years, re-roofing a house. Currently, Grattan Township does not require building permit to re-roof a house, Virgin does not, but when I called Cascade today, they said yes, I had to have permit to re-roof my house. The other is, and I know Mike Burns, you interceded last year for Pink Arrow when we're going to put up a tent, and all of a sudden we had to have a building permit to put up a tent here in the, in the city. It just, and then what Greg said, I just feel like, like the city, along with the Chamber, along with Cascade, you just feel like you're getting nickled and dined to death. I know that you're waiting, currently waiting the permit, the cost per sidewalk this year, but again, it just, all of a sudden, it's permit after permit after permit to do what I would consider as minor things, and again, it's not, I've also, so I've checked into other entities such as Grattan, Virgin's, and they don't require all the same things. I don't know if it's right or wrong, it's just, I feel like we need to look at, and maybe Cascade is the best solution for Lowell, but we need to go out and look at and get presentations from other companies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, do you want to address those couple comments? I understand that, I think the roofing, re-roofing permits, if I said it was around 50/50 in communities that do and don't issue them, it's probably pretty close. We started doing it a number of years ago, really because of citizen complaints, people would have their roofs gone, and they couldn't get ahold of the contractor, they had issues, and we started doing them basically to get rid of the fly-by-night or shoddy work that were coming to us in the form of complaints, and, you know, we think that's valuable, it's a $65 fee, it's one of our least expensive permits that we issue, and we at least make sure we have somebody responsible for the work, and they fill out some paperwork and make sure that they're going to be doing it correctly. So, we don't do open roof inspections, we don't hold up to jobs, a number of places do that. Same thing on the tent, building code requires that, this isn't like for residential tents where you're having an open house or something like that, but if you have a commercial tent where you're putting people in, it's a temporary structure, building code requires that permits be issued for those under certain circumstances, if they're small, under like 400 square feet, if they're enclosed, larger, if they're open, like 700, give or take, those don't need to be permitted, but if you put up larger ones, they permit them, and we just make sure that the right materials are used, there's enough ballasting or staking, that it's not going to blow away, and certain safety measures are in place, it's just for public safety.
Hello, my name is Eric Barkus, I reside at 1270 Hoplone Hills, my wife and I also own the Ability Weaver Store at 215 West Main Street, and first of all, I want to thank Brian for helping me recently, I had some questions, and we're trying to renovate the upstairs of our building at 215 West Main, and Brian was very helpful, as I met with him, he made time for me that day to come in and answer some questions. But I do want to back up and say I've been trying to start the renovation of my upstairs for over a year now, it basically were, it's two apartments that had been left in decay, and I'm trying to just basically rebuild them to use them, to use them for rentals, and it's been a very difficult process, the first, when I first asked the Cascade firm there, they told me that I did need to use the rehab code, and I, but I, I'm new to all of this, and so my architect that I, that I selected worked for quite a few months on trying to, to basically rebuild what I already have, the walls, everything is there, and then I've spent over $2,000 on that, but then I've recently learned that there's a lot more to this rehabilitation code than just the drawing, and my current architect had no knowledge of this rehab code, so I, that's all, that's time and money that's all been wasted, and now that I'm getting smarter at this, thanks to the meeting of Brian, I've found an architect that is skilled in this, but the quote for that is over $11,000, and so I'm, I'm concerned for all of the business owners in the commercial buildings that are trying to rehabilitate their upstairs, because it's, it's been very difficult, it looks to be very expensive for something that's, I feel is fairly simple, I'm not, I'm not doing any major reservations, renovations, I'm just trying to rebuild it with new drywall and new plumbing, so I'm, I'm really not speaking to Cascade at all, but the city in general, it would be nice if we had a plan to help those of us that are new to construction to get through this process, because again, I'm a year into it, it's, I'm going to be spending thousands of dollars for something that really already exists, I already have two apartments, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no experience in this, and, and we talked about it at the last committee of Lowell, so I guess it's what you guys decided that you want to do.
Well, I have a little concern, I feel like we're fish out of water, we asked Mike six months ago to, to look at this and go out and look at us, and we put in RP of getting some competitive bids and that part of it, and then we have a meeting a couple weeks ago, and we changed your mind now, to me it looks like we're now looking really to change your mind again and give it some more thought, so whatever you guys decide on that as well, too, but I'd like to get it done, get moving on to it, and see what we come up with personally.
I thought we discussed everything that we needed to discuss and made a decision the last time we talked about it, so that's what I thought we ran with it.
Well, I guess what I can do, I can make a motion to approve the Cascade inspection as presented, and we'll go to the vote and see what happens.
Okay, I'll support his motion. Sue?
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent, councilmember Chambers?
No.
And councilmember Canfield?
No.
Okay. There's a motion, we'll put it into Old Business and revisit it, I guess, I don't know what you guys want to do going forward, we put it out there, nobody responded, or we're supposed to chase people down to get them to fang interest in it? I don't, I don't know how you get the people you think that you want, and if it's all code issues, aren't we going to run into the exact same problems with somebody else? I have no experience, and these are all just my questions.
I think we should just talk to a couple of other candidates, and I had mentioned to Mike that PCI is a local contractor or inspection firm that does similar stuff, IMS used to do work for us, I know there were some concerns about their stuff. Mike, you mentioned a large commercial firm is doing some stuff here in Michigan now.
Seifel, yes.
But I would just like to, you know, let a couple other people have a five-minute presentation and hear what they have to say, I think we can try and find a way to make it easier to rehab our buildings here in town than it has been in the past, and I think we just owe our constituents a right to see what the options are and see who our best partners are moving forward. So I would, you know, suggest that we reach out to, you know, possibly PCI, IMS, and the, other than you had Mike, and see if any of them are interested, maybe they're not, maybe they'll, and if no one, we're not getting, it needs to be someone somewhat local that can serve us properly, Cascade has great service, no doubt about it, just I feel a little bit strong in some of their enforcement.
Okay, we'll do that, and?
Can I have a vote on that, so I can be directed, please?
I'll make that motion. You guys?
I make a motion to direct Mike to contact PCI Inspections, IMS, and the third firm of his choice, and see if they are interested in performing inspections for us.
Support. Discussion on it, Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent, councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGore?
No.
All right, that carries. You go with that?
Yep.
Okay. Item B, Public Hearing, Resolution 1618, adopting the budget for fiscal year 1819, I'll look for a motion to open a public hearing on the budget.
I make a motion to open a public hearing on the budget. Support.
All right, any discussion ideas? All those in favor of opening a public hearing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? All right, public hearing. Michael?
I presented the budget to you on, served Monday in April, it was presented by required by Charter, we spent Saturday, April 20, going through the budget deadline. In your, in your pack of higher resolution, you list a couple of modifications to a couple of line items that we talked about at the budget session. Also, just so you're aware, since these are, these two are tied by together is the scheduled rate of fees, we've only proposed one change to rate of fees at this point, and that would be increasing the zoning ordinance, zoning board of appeals hearing variances, if you had a variance rather than a $500 escrow, we would increase that to $1,000, that is standard, that's been normal for most communities surrounding us, that was recommended to us by Williams &amp; Works. The water and sewer fees are still being analyzed by Warren Kramer from RW Bear, I anticipate will be coming back to council in the near future with those findings, so there was no recommendation regarding that at this time, and I'm recommending that the budget with the modifications and the rates that are being presented to be modified as presented.
Any public comment, input, questions about the fiscal year budget for 1819? Council questions, comments? All right, I will then look for a motion to approve the budget as amended.
So moved? Support?
All right, anything else? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
And councilmember Phillips is absent.
All right, item C, approval of the adjustment rates.
And we discussed that the only modification this part is the zoning board of appeals hearing variance rate.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the rates with the zoning adjustment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Any other changes for it? Sue again?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent, and councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
All right, item B, redevelopment-ready communities, Resolution 1718, Michael?
In order to remain eligible for assistance from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, municipalities are now mandated to participate in the redevelopment-ready community program. This is a voluntary, no-cost certification program designed to promote effective redevelopment strategies through a set of best practices. The program measures and then certifies communities and integrate transparency, predictability, and efficiency into their daily developmental practices. The IRC certification is a formal recognition that your community has a vision for the future, and the fundamental practices in place to get there. Last fall, Sue Ellery and I attended training sessions on what they were looking for, in many ways, we have already been following the recommended processes for years, however, there's some areas in the training that we may need to approve upon, this process will provide us with tools to help us establish those areas. I just completed a survey of our city's practices, and this is something that is needed in order to begin this process. The certification process has no deadline for completion, depending on the needs for each community, some can complete it within a year, some communities may need a few years to reach the status of redevelopment-ready certified. In your pack, I gave you some information about what the METC is looking for with this program, and if we were to move forward, I would just need to have a approved resolution and a completed survey, which I've already completed, to initiate this process. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council approve Resolution 1718 to engage the Michigan Economic Development Corporation in the redevelopment-ready communities program.
Listen to the benefit, anybody have any questions for Mike, or Sue?
This is basically at no cost to anybody, Mike?
Correct, yeah, it's no cost to us.
And what's covered? And it was covered, um, I'll say, when we, when I was in Great Haven this weekend with the municipally, it was covered, uh, and there was a lot of positive feedback on it. Um, it's basically minimal effort and work for, uh, you know, and it, it gives you a lot to show for it, so, there's a lot of people really happy with it. It wasn't even a topic or a discussion, it came up through the course of things, and we went off on one of those hefty tangents. So, uh, with that, I will look for a motion to approve Resolution seventeen eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay, anything else for Mike? Sue?
Mayor DeGore?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips is absent, Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
All right. Uh, questions, comments, discussion on any of the lovely reports? Sue, uh, Board and, are you comfortable here?
I will talk.
Boarding Commission reports, Mr. Canfield?
Uh, Laura met on May ninth, uh, Rich Conrad is a new member, that, that was his first meeting, we welcome Rich and thank him for his contributions and time. Uh, the Phase One A from G Drive down Alden Nash by Harold Ziegler Ford and Walgreen, that should be completed probably by mid-month, next month in June is our plan. Uh, we are expecting our state response to be here anytime to our grant application for the MDOT side of it. Uh, we do have the DNR, DNR response, which we are responding to, and the DNR will walk the proposed route this summer. By October first, we need easements or letters of support for our share of the privately raised money and easement agreements in place, and hope to move forward with the new section of trail. That covered it. Impact Church, Love Week, uh, they are doing things around town, and thank you to them for doing that. That covers it.
Thanks, sir. What's your answer?
Uh, light and power, uh, got the new, voted on the new insurance package, um, to help control costs. The, uh, finding commission, we had our first, um, applicant for the Airbnb for special use permit, and it was granted. There was a lot of restrictions to go with it, but it was, uh, it was good to finally get it started after, uh, putting that whole package together to make that happen, so it was good. That's it.
Thank you. Miss, oh, just isn't here. Mr. Salzweil, I have nothing to report on. I don't either. Five thirty was canceled, DDA was canceled, and, um, Mike attended vision without me, so we'll move to your report, Mr. Burton.
Okay. Um, residents who receive water and sewer bills should, we started receiving the notice today, or maybe tomorrow, but, um, beginning next Tuesday, um, I know the, the letter says May twenty-eighth, but they're not gonna work on Memorial Day. Beginning May twenty-nine through June fifteen, Prine Abouha, um, who's our consultant for the, uh, stormwater asset management program, they're gonna begin smoke testing the city's sanitary sewer system during that time. Um, the smoke shouldn't go through people's homes unless traps are empty. Um, they ask that if people do that, to pour a gallon of water into the cell and use floor drains to prevent that. Um, in addition, um, they anticipate, um, no, there's nothing harmful with the smoke, nothing of that nature, it's just, it's smoke, and it's intended to determine whether or not, if there's any leak, where they can detect leaks into the system is what the intent is. Uh, if you haven't received the notice in the mail, uh, we do have a copy of the notice, um, on the city's website, and on the city's Facebook page, I did put in, I did, um, put a, uh, notice on the, on the Facebook page this afternoon, um, so you will be seeing that throughout the entire ci- city for the next couple of weeks, beginning next week. Uh, last Tuesday, um, we had Dan Burton come in, uh, conduct our walking audit, and, uh, we had about fifteen people attend throughout the, throughout the day, and, um, I thought it was a well-attended session, it was well, something that Dan pointed out to us is that the way, if you come through and do a walking audit with him, the way you look at a street, the way we approach walkability in the downtown, wherever you thought of it before is gonna be different whenever you go through the, through the walking audit with him, and, um, there were a number of things that he found that, um, he suggested we do. Some of them are very low-hanging fruit things we probably can do with, with relatively low cost, relatively low regulation with MDOT. Others, um, are going to be much more, um, gonna need much more buy-in from MDOT, obviously. Uh, main, main issue, obviously, is, is Main Street here. Um, he had a number of suggestions for that. Um, with that, as he is in the process of preparing a report for the, uh, for the project, uh, I anticipate receiving the report in the next sixty days. The intent is, is to take the findings of the report and try and merge them with the current downtown master plan that we're working on approving, try and tie all of these into the plan to see, to make them work, mesh together, um, and then taking that back to the DDA and the council a little later date. Um, all in all, like I said, it was a very well, it was a very, it was a good day, um, I know, we're, uh, a couple of business owners, merchants that were there, um, they seemed to be very interested in it and thought it was, thought it was good. Um, I know my staff who attended was very pleased with it, they learned a lot, um, a lot of things that we don't think about, just doing our, doing our jobs, that you have somebody like, um, Dan Burton, and he goes all over the world going through communities with, and addressing walkability, placemaking issues, so, he, he knows what he's talking about. So, that was a, that was a very, uh, that was a very good day. Um, Hudson, uh, we're still on slate for the week of June eleventh, beginning construction, we haven't gotten any of the phasing yet as to whether they're gonna do north of Maine first or south of Maine, we haven't received any of that information yet. Um, once I receive that, I'll, I will share that. We've begun, um, construction on our Broadway, uh, we did the mill last, we started the mill last week, I know they've been working, uh, today probably not so much with the weather, um, but, uh, they anticipate about a three-week process for completion on that. South Broadway's moving along, um, we're in the process of setting up for the boar and jack going underneath the railroad, uh, for the, to get the, uh, the sewer and water through there. Um, and they had anticipated initially having a project completed by June twenty-fifth. With the weather and some issues with the boar and jacking, it would, um, they don't, they anticipate, uh, before the four, um, that shouldn't, at our last meeting, that shouldn't impact King Merling with Harvest, it appears that Harvest is gonna be a little later for them this year. Uh, two items of note I wanna bring to the attention of the council. The first one is the Department of Treasury just recently sent out, um, a notice to, um, municipalities and, and, and counties and township statewide, um, looking at making some modifications to how we assess, um, for, um, uh, how the assessing standards are set here in Michigan. They're looking at doing a couple of things. One of the things they wanna do is regionalize the assessing process, um, mainly through the border review. One of the things they're looking at doing is instead of having your own, each municipality having their own border review, they wanna have a more regional, standardized, specially-trained border review. That's one issue they're looking. The other thing that they're looking to do is requiring that all municipalities utilize a level three assessor or above, level three or level four, there's four levels of assessing that, of assessors in Michigan, four is the highest standard, three is, um, is a pretty strong standard as well. Our assessors are, are, um, level three, to my knowledge, oh, yeah, they are level three. Um, so, we wouldn't be impacted in that aspect, but, um, the Kent County, um, Assessors Association has shared a number of concerns with this, mainly, the big issue is local control. Um, having border reviews and having valuation set outside your locality is, is a concern for the assessors, it's something that they're very concerned of because values here are different than values in other parts of the county, but we won't, having one standardized operation, that brings concern to them. Also, the big concern is especially for certain, more rural communities than us, um, forcing them to use a level three assessor, whether or not they've had a, had a, had an assessor for many years that they've used, that they've been comfortable with, that hasn't given problems, there's concerns now with the state coming in, them wanting to, uh, come in, uh, basically their mandate that they go to a lo-, whether or not they have to go to a county assessing system, there are a number of counties that do provide assessing, um, for jurisdictions in their county, Kent County does not do that, um, but this is an issue statewide. So, it's something that I'm gonna be monitoring, and I'll let you know more on, as we hear from it. Um, the other issue is, um, there is a, there is some litig-, there is some litigation currently, um, in the Michigan Court of Appeals pertaining to, um, issues regarding the Headley Amendment. Um, back when the Headley Amendment was passed in the, uh, in the late nineteen seventies, they mandated that, um, while there were certain, while, what they did was obviously they, they reduced the charter villages that you had by a percentage, um, so it forced your, whatever your charter res- resolution, whatever your charter village is, they forced that down. Um, but one of the trade-offs with the Headley Amendment was, is that they were supposed to continue to provide the same percentage of funding, um, to, that states was to provide to the municipalities statewide, and that was never supposed, that percentage was never supposed to go down. Um, it got up to as high as about forty-eight, forty, the state was required to fund forty-eight point six percent of local, um, funding, that was what they were supposed to fund before, it's dropped down to about forty-one percent, which, at the macro level, that's several billion dollars. Main re, main argument as to why they believe there's a violation of the, uh, Headley Amendment in this aspect is because with the issues of Proposal A coming in in the nineties, with the, um, the issues pertaining to, um, the charter school amendments, uh, and, uh, also more, more unfunded mandates by the state that they've put on us in the last thirty years, there's, there's an argument being made right now that, um, in the, um, in the Court of Appeals to, to claim that it was a violation of the state law. Uh, this is be led, this is led by the Taxpayers Coalition of Michigan, um, it's led by a, uh, long-term city manager in Michigan by the name of Steve Duchaine, he's former city manager in Sterling Heights, former city manager in Lincoln Park and, and East Point, but there's also some legal professors from Wayne State that are involved in this as well. Um, I anticipate hearing something probably later this fall, if there's gonna, if they are gonna rule in the favor of municipalities. What that means at this point, I don't know, but it is something that we are, um, paying attention to, and that's all I have.
Uh, do you think there's any benefit to having Wolfers look in the ledger on that smoke notice too?
Absolutely.
Rental properties, I can think you'll get water bills if you, you know, you.
I'd be glad to.
Somewhere else?
I'd be glad to share that, we could do that.
All right, anything else for Mike? No? All right, uh, under appointments, no applications for border review, uh, or local officers' compensation, or LCT endowment, uh, but Marty told me that Bruce Parker is, well, you continue on finding commission, so there's no objections to that, we'll make that appointment, and then hopefully we'll get some applications for the rest of them. Uh, that's it under there. Uh, council comments, Mr. Canfield?
Nothing.
Mr. Chambers?
It was good to see the book, the boat design and moving forward with that, and I think it's a, it's right on schedule for what's all going on. Town's alive and vibrant, and it's just an extension of what we're gonna have, and, um, it's gonna bring a lot of good things to our town.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Salzweil.
Uh, I wanna thank Mike and his staff for, um, the budget that was approved, um, this is my first public, uh, budget that's been through, I sat through a lot of private where it seems to be a lot more funding and available, some money's around, and I think they did a great job of getting us some basic services and keeping those as well, so, Mike, good to see you and your team for doing that.
And, I don't have anything, so we'll turn it back to Mr. Salzweil.
With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven forty-five.
Support?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.